Welcome to Scotch Plains, New Jersey. This is Verizon Fios, Channel 22, and Comcast Cable, Channel 34. Scotch Plains Television, your town, your TV.
Scotch Plains Television presents a meeting of the Township Council. And now, from the municipal building, the Scotch Plains Mayor and Council.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Township Council Business Meeting of May 20th, 2014. Ms. Lucina.
I wish to make the following announcement to show compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, known as Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of New Jersey, 1975. Notice of this meeting was given by adopting an annual schedule of the location, time, and date, sending copies to the Scotch Plains Vanwood Times, the Star Ledger, and the Courier News, posting in the municipal building, and filing a copy with the Township Clerk within seven days following the annual organizational meeting of this body. If you would please rise for the pledge to the flag and remain standing for our invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, and God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Please remain standing.
Before I give the invocation, I wanted to ask everyone here if you would join me in a moment of silence. Our Township Manager lost a very near and dear relative of his. His aunt passed away this past weekend. And if you know Jerry, you know that she played a very integral part in his life growing up. And so, if you will join me in a moment of silence to honor her memory and to include him and his family in your prayers, I would greatly appreciate it. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for this beautiful weather. We thank you for good health. And we ask that you bless those that are not as fortunate with better health, peace of mind, and joy in their hearts. We ask that you overlook these ceremonies, give us wisdom, give us guidance, help us all to see the better good, and guide us in determining what is in the best interest of our residents. We ask that you protect those who protect us, whether they be in the armed forces overseas, here at home, or in our police, fire, and emergency response individuals. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Ms. Lucina, would you please call to roll?
Mrs. Gilinella?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Marcus?
Here.
Mr. Vastine?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here.
The next thing on our agenda is public comment. Anybody wishing to address this council, please come forward and state your name and address. Thank you.
Hello. I'll repeat, Terry, 1421 Broadway wrote, "I missed the last couple of meetings, and I missed some things that I'm interested in. One of them was there's some mention of a grant for the Frazi property. Either read it in the paper or heard it somewhere. Is that true? Is that possible?" Or not?
I don't recall for that pro-- well, you're referring to the zoo property?
No, the Frazi property.
Frazi property? I'm not-- I can look into that. I'm not aware, to be honest with you.
Okay. And my other question was, is anything happened on the report from the architect about Shady Rest?
Approximately three weeks ago, I received a complete draft of the report. Actually, I shouldn't call it a draft, a final copy of the report. I'm in the next meeting. I'll work with the council to set a date for public hearing. We'll present it to the public, and, you know, we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Mark Kingsburg, 40 Spuce Mill Lane. I live over in Lambert's Mill Village, which is the far side of town, so to go anywhere in town, I'm traveling around quite a bit. And I just wanted to commend the Town Manager and the new DPW head for the street paving that's got done very expeditiously. And it's nice that a lot of roads we've been waiting a long time to get done have been done. It's great. In addition, I've signed up for the town alerts, which I really think we should keep pushing because during all those street closures, every day I was getting emails from Sergeant Hernandez as anybody who signed up. And it was really a big help in knowing what streets to avoid. And we should just keep pushing. That's a wonderful tool for everybody in town. So, again, I just think it's great that the streets got done. Okay?
For sharing those comments with us tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Grace Delena, 2265 Sunrise Court. I just want to congratulate you guys. You're doing a great job. I've been here for many years, and the budget, you know, average $11 increase is I'm really happy about. And usually, you have people come up here complaining, and I'm here to say, "Thank you." And also, I don't know if there's many people here who were so upset about the library and the funding, and I appreciate the fact that you've got the funding back for the library. Good job.
Thank you for coming out tonight, sharing that with us.
Good evening. My name is Don Wussler. I'm chairman of the parade committee, if people don't know who I am. I received a very disturbing phone call this morning. We'll back up a little bit. The parade committee is made up of all volunteers. We've never been politically inclined, and we never intend to be, but this phone call this morning shook me up. What other parties is going to have participants marching in the parade? The other party isn't. Now, the other party that's not marching, I don't think that's the party that has-- should be probably marching. That's a no-no. They've signed up, they're going to march. That's the way it is. It's not-- we don't, you know, let's take what Memorial Day is really for, for the veterans, which I happen to be one. And I lost a few friends when I was in the service. By luck, I came home. So, keep this in mind when you make up your mind. It's Memorial Day. It's not election day or anything else. It's not political. It is strictly, strictly for the veterans. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Wussler.
So, may I ask a question about that, Mr. Mayor? Given that it is not political, is there a reason why the Democratic Committee is marching in the parade and the Republican Committee is not? Was an offer extended to both?
We don't ask questions. We send out a form to everybody that always participates. They send it back to us. We form a line of march. We have the line of march just about. We have our final meeting on Thursday night, and that'll be it.
So, everyone was offered the opportunity?
Oh, yeah. Oh, definitely. Definitely. There's no question about it. We wouldn't look-- because, like I said, we don't look at things from a political standpoint. It's a parade for the veterans. What more can I say?
Well, I agree, and that's why I actually questioned that you would have, because I did not recall in the years that I've been on the council that the Scotch Plains Democrats or the Scotch Plains Republicans actually marched in the parade.
Yeah.
They were not a part of the parade. And when I saw that, I felt that it was making it political and not focusing on the veterans that Memorial Day is all about.
Yes, but in the day it becomes political, I resign.
Well, okay.
Mr. Wussler, if I may, Mr. Vastine?
I'm sorry.
Are you finished?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
So, that's my concern, is that ultimately, I don't want it to become political.
Trust me. Trust me. But the letter is sent to the Democratic Party and the Republican Party. If they choose not to, that's their prerogative.
Got it.
They're more than welcome.
Great.
The only thing we don't allow is, you know, political signs or anything like that.
Thank you. Well, that clarification is very helpful. Thank you very much.
That's the way to-- yes, Mr.--
Mr. Wussler, before you leave, I want to ask you one other thing. And just, I wanted to clarify that, Mr. Vastine, you haven't been in town as long as many of us in this town. And I will tell you that I've, as a Democrat, as a Democratic candidate, was in the parade because the invitation was extended. The one thing that's forbidden is that you cannot hand out literature, you cannot post signs along the route. That simple. And I happen to know that my Republican friends on the other side of the aisle have marched in the parade as well. That said, more importantly, Mr. Wussler, Mr. Chairman, I should say, would you share and spare me from having to make the announcement later, although I'd love to do it? Tell us about the festivities that you and your committee have planned for Sunday evening and for Monday.
Yes, I would. We've done a lot of publication. This'll be the third year. Mayor Glover and Mayor Colleen from Vanwood thought it'd be a good idea if we held a concert the Sunday night before the parade. And we do. This'll be our third year. We'll be having the concert again over at the Northside Vanwood Railroad Station. We have the Westfield Community Band, starts at 6:30. We have three individuals who were in the service in one of the wars that will get up and give a four- or five-minute little spiel, which is real nice. Some of it brings tears to your eyes. And I can appreciate this because I went through it. And then, on Monday, we have the parade, of course. The American Legion has a service at 8:00. Vanwood has a service at 9:00. Then we all come back over here, and we have our introduction of the Graham Marshall, who I have to tell you is 95 years old, Second World War veteran. And I hope when I'm 95, if I lived that long, I'm as sharp as he is. But there'll be no political speeches. The mayor will welcome everybody. I'll introduce him. He'll make a little talk. We're shooting for 10:45 for the parade to kick off.
But we should-- the festivities begin at 10:00 a.m. at the gazebo?
At the gazebo, 10:00 a.m. Right. And then, again, the concert is at 6:30. Bring your own chairs. We have some chairs, but not enough. Two years ago, we had 500 programs. We ran out. We ran out last year. I think we increased it to 600 this year. We look forward to it. It's obvious it's taken off because we're getting more people every year. So, and that's pretty much it.
No, I think that says it. The only thing I'd like to add is that this concert, which is three years old now, and we hope it becomes a tradition of our community forever, has been completely funded by individual and corporate donations. So, there are no tax dollars that are spent on this Memorial Day concert this Sunday, or had been in the prior two years. Mr. Wussler, thank you, and congratulations, and thank you for your service to the community, for being our chairman for the last 100 years.
We're all counting. I forget. I couldn't tell you.
Me too, sir. Well, thank you for coming out.
Frank Fester, Ramapo Way. With your indulgence, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank all of the veterans in town and in this room for their service.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question about the senior housing.
Can you just speak up a little louder?
How many units are available in the senior housing, and have they been carried over for the past month?
I'll defer to Mr. Councilman Jones.
I actually have a meeting of that board tomorrow morning, and I'll get back to you soon.
All right. Are there any vacancies on that board?
Yeah, I'll get back to you tomorrow. That'll be--
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fester, as always.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Mr. Wussler, for all your volunteering, and yes, that is a lot of service, and he is to be commended. On the website, it talks about the leaves and brush and gumballs being picked up as of April 21st. That is on the website. I mentioned this two weeks ago because it says, "Additional information will be following." Well, it's a month later, and there has been no additional information. Let me brief you to what I said last two weeks ago. An elderly woman and her grandchildren raked all the leaves in the yard of her disabled neighbor. That has been sitting outside his house for over a month. She has contacted the manager, the DPW, other people.
No, I just received a phone call on that, and I picked it up today on my office line. She called on my office line.
Okay, because I know she called, and she said--
No, no. Very sympathetic to what you're about to say.
Yes, and she said the woman in, I'm not sure if it's the manager's office or the DPW, told her she would have to go elsewhere. Maybe she'd have to deposit it at Westfield, which would cost her money. She is very upset, and I don't blame her. She's doing a good deed, and now she is bearing the brunt of it. She wants to write a letter to the newspaper. I told her, "You have to do what you have to do." But needless to say, she is being ignored, and she feels that way when she did something very good. Talking about recycling, we're going to have all the concerts, we're going to have all the events, we're going to have the, I guess we're going to have the soccer thing, maybe. I don't see recycling containers at every public building in a number of places like we should have. We talked about that. We had an ordinance. And I'm just going to let you know that last year, Dr. Pepper gave over $300,000 to help fund public space recyclable containers with national grants. Unfortunately, the deadline for this year was February 11th. I don't think we probably applied for that. Last year, they had 33 grants, and more than 7,000 recycled bins were put into parks. Very nice. Americans used 50 billion bottles of water last year, and the production for those bottles costs us up to 17 million barrels of oil. This does not include the cost to transport those bottles to their destinations. It takes three liters of water to produce one liter of a bottle, and it produces more than 2.5 million tons of carbon dioxide. I'm giving you this information because I think recycling is so important. Maybe some of you don't think it is, but your children and your grandchildren are going to bear the brunt of us throwing things away. One recycled can saves enough energy to run your TV for three hours. And metal, like aluminum, can be recycled indefinitely. It only requires 5% of energy to take that metal can and produce it again into a container. It only uses 5% of the carbon dioxide emissions compared to if you're going to recycle or make a can from new. Throwing an aluminum can away is like half-filling it with gasoline and discarding it. As is said online, aluminum in a landfill or an incinerator is a waste. By 2020, Alcoa wants to get 80% of its aluminum from scrap and recycling. Right now, it's only 45%, so they're almost going to double it. I just think that we can do more and we can do better. Yes, I'm happy with the parade plans. We'll be at the concert again, and I'm happy that the library is being funded, but we have to do more in town. We have to leave an impact. We have to be more green. It's going to affect future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins, and thank you for bringing that to us. I'm going to ask the manager to review what our recycling abilities are on the street, and we'll report back within the next meeting, I would hope. And then, we'll deal, I guess, Mr. James, with how we can address it and take care of it. I think, Ms. Perkins, that's a very thoughtful suggestion, and we're all recycling at our homes, so why would we not do it in the municipal? I know the building doesn't. I can tell you. But we'll review that and be back to you. Sir?
Good evening, Council. Mayor, Jerry, I'm sorry for your loss. Just a couple of quick things. First of all--
Can I ask you to speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Is that better?
Please.
Last week, I was at Shady Rest, and it was after sunset, and the American flag was flying, and it wasn't lit. I believe that's a violation of protocol.
You are absolutely right.
And not that we should run out and put a light on it, but we should take the flag down at sunset.
One or the other.
Yeah, yeah. So, if you would be-- you know, make a note of that.
I'm sure Mr. James has it already.
I can see him writing over there, so. And I'm sure it was probably an oops for the one night. Second of all, concert sounds great. Any luck with the flyover from the National Guard?
Oh, by all means, I understand you're leading the flyover.
Oh, fair enough.
I just want to know, you know, you're not going to be a wingman this year, right? You're going to take us--
Yeah, and I got a new case on my phone.
Looking forward to it, sir.
Another thing is on the budget. $11, no dollars, zero dollars. It's such a small amount. It's kind of immaterial. But the bigger sin is the school board and the county, the 250 and the 150. And you know that I've been talking to you about the county for quite a while, and we simply are being taken advantage of. Mayor, as you mentioned, we're the cash cow, and you didn't use it in the confines of the county, but it's true. Us in the western parts of Union County are taken advantage of. This is the umlaut year. Again, we've been saddled with almost a 6% increase, three times the 2% cap. And that makes it rather difficult on our residents. You're there looking at $400 for an average price, average home, and our increase is only $11. I think it may be the lowest in history. Could it be zero? Possibly?
It's not the lowest in history. If you recall, Mayor Marks had zero in 2000.
Okay. Well, it's almost the lowest, almost the lowest.
Almost.
You know? And I, yes, I'd like to see zero, but I support Mr. James in that he has some unknowns in there, and he's keeping some stuff close to his vest, and perhaps next year, he'll be in a better position to do that. So, I have to trust a person that we hired.
Well, thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am?
Ilse Hydermar, 1380 Trail Road, Scotch Plains. Now, I don't know if you addressed this or not.
Senator Murray, can you just twist, bring the mic just down a little? Thank you so much.
Oh, you're such a gentleman. Thank you. On May 17th, in the Courier News, I read about the Union County Sales Reynolds Hospital. Are you aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. Now, how will that affect our taxes for Union County? This is the way I figure it. They bought it for $26 million, and for 2013, they had to subsidize it for $13.5 million. And they anticipate making $50 million in five years. So, that would mean $13.5 they would save, $10 million they would make, and aside from that, they're going to make $500,000 in real estate taxes between Berkeley Heights and the county. So, don't you think the county should reduce our taxes this year? That's a difference of like $23.5 million that they're going to make plus the rental. Now, another thing, I'm very-- oh, what do you think about that? Do you have any opinion?
Well, on a very personal note, I won't speak for the whole council.
Pardon me?
I will not speak for the whole council, but my own assessment of it is, you know, that facility has provided an invaluable service to citizens throughout our community and other communities.
They will still do that.
And they will still, and they will do that. Regrettably, it has not been, you know, profitable. I mean, it's had some very difficult times, and a lot of it not because of any mismanagement there. I sat on the Board of Directors there, and it was because every year, the folks in Trenton and the folks in Washington changed the rules. So, one year, they would be getting huge subsidies for this service that they offered, and they would try to catch up and facilitate being able to provide such care. And then, the following year, the rug was pulled out from under them, and now it's this service that is going to be heavily subsidized.
Well, this company--
So, it, you know, the fact of the matter is, I think they have run into what many of our hospitals have. We lost Muhlenberg, okay? And as you know, Ms. Hydermar, you and I have spoken, you know, New York City is going through, this country is going through, the loss of these, you know, facilities. And I can't sit here and really do justice to all the reasons why, other than to say, hopefully, this will reduce, you know, pressure on the county, okay? Which, because the hospital was subsidized heavily at points, all right? And one would hope, Ms. Hydermar, that the benefits of which we may see. And I, quite frankly, would hope that we will see.
Well, the company that bought it, sure, they thinks they're going to make money.
Well, you know, one would hope, but, you know, I know a lot of firms have made that move and didn't.
I'm very concerned about another thing. This has to do with the Senior Citizen Housing Corporation. I just recently found out that they were given a $1.5 million loan, and no interest loan. Who gave it, and what's that all about?
I think we've had that discussion.
$1.5 million. And I just discovered that in December of 2013.
Mr. James and Mr. Jones, I'm going to ask you all, we had that discussion, and I think Mr. Lara looked into it.
You've got to talk loud because I forgot my hearing aid.
No, no, and I'm having, I have an ear infection, so I can't hear my--
Mr. Mayor, I'll clarify the situation. I believe the number that's been referenced is more around $1.25 million, and that's the amount of money that was forwarded to that, $1.25 million.
$1.25 million.
And that was money that was, that was money that was advanced to the Senior Housing Corporation over two decades ago, or approximately two decades ago, when it was created. There's no recent loan that this council has made to the Senior Housing Corporation.
Okay. Now, you know that article, oh, I dropped some, I dropped the whole thing. I want to read this from the Constitution again. Article, well, Article 7, Section 3. No county, city, borough, town, council, or village shall hereafter give any money or property or loan, its money or credit, which they're doing, to or to aid in any individual association or corporation, which it is a corporation, or become security for or be directly or indirectly the owner of any or bonds of any association or corporation. No donation of land or appropriation of money shall be made by the state or any county or municipal corporation to or for the use of any society, association, or corporation, whatever. So, just kind of remember that, and I guess that's all I have to, I have a lot more to say, but I don't want to get into the law.
Please. You're here.
Well, now, you formed--
Councilman Murray, I'm sure he wants to hear what you have to say.
You formed a committee. I think you did.
We did. The governing body did.
Oh, the government body did.
Majority of the governing body did.
Are any owners of the property part of that committee?
Owners of property in town?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
And they approve, and what do you expect to do? I'd like to know. And so would everybody else like to know.
I think that's up to the committee ultimately. I mean, the vision that this is embracing is, once and for all, what can we do with our downtown? I mean, we created a CID to look at what we could do, and that got blown up twice.
And the business management, and now you have this.
All of that. So, what I'm suggesting is that if we take the politics out of the process, and that's why the ordinance or the resolution specifically excludes anyone from the governing body, if we take the politics out of it and we provide an opportunity for property owners, business owners, residents here in town, to participate in developing a vision for the downtown, I think that the result will be either we decide we can't do anything other than maybe paint the outside of the buildings and put in fresh sidewalks, or perhaps there's something larger that we can do. But I think that that conclusion will be obtained through a process that this committee will engage in.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I don't know what the answer is, I don't think anybody, one person knows what the answer is.
Somebody came into our store, and they sell products, so I was trying to talk them into renting a store in Scotch Plains, so I'm trying.
I know, I think-
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sinemar, thank you, and just, just to follow up to your question of who sits on that board-
Oh, one other thing. I do think all the council members should respect one another, respect the manager, respect the attorney, and above all, respect our mayor. Thank you.
Well, I thank you for that. Ms. Hydermar, just to, uh, just to follow a point to that, you're, you're concerned about who serves on the committee. I, I regret that when that was passed by the majority of the council, that we have prominent members on that committee who don't live in town, don't own property in town, and have not paid taxes in town, so, to be continued, and we hope that that committee, as was discussed at our last meeting, will be open for other applicants, and I understand it will be, but there's some criteria. Ms. Perkins-
Carolyn Perkins, Westfield Road in Scotch Plains. Just a footnote on Reynolds Hospital, yes, it's been sold, but the state still has to approve it, so that's still pending.
Thank you for that clarification. Seeing no one else coming forward, uh, we'll close our, you know, public discussion, a portion of our meeting, and we'll move on to presentations of, uh, recognition. We have a couple, and the first is Proclamation Relay for Life, uh, Councilwoman Jill Linnell, I think that you're very close and dear to this.
Yes, um, actually Relay for Life, uh, for those members of the community who may not be aware, was this weekend, it was the sixteenth into the seventeenth at our high school. Um, our relay in Scotch Plains is unique because it is completely student-run. Um, it's something we recognized the students for last year, and I hope to bring them back at a future meeting because if you've never been involved in planning a Relay for Life, it's a tremendous undertaking, tremendous, and the fact that our students are able to do this is really incredible. Um, in the mayor's absence, I did attend a ribbon-cutting, um, to kick off the Paint the Town Purple campaign, and I would encourage the township and the council members to continue to, um, help these students in their efforts in the future, as this is an annual event. But the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Relay for Life is the signature activity of the American Cancer Society and helps celebrate cancer survivors and caregivers, remembered, remembers loved ones' loss to the disease, and empowers individuals and communities to fight back against cancer, and the money raised during Relay for Life of Scotch Plains supports the American Cancer Society's missions of saving lives and celebrating a world with less cancer and more birthdays by helping people to stay well, by helping people get well, by finding cures for cancer, and by fighting back, and Relay for Life helped to fund more than one hundred fifty million dollars in cancer research last year. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Kevin Glover of the Township of Scotch Plains, have hereby proclaimed May sixteenth as Relay for Life Day in Scotch Plains, and recognize the Relay for Life efforts to empower individuals and communities to fight back against cancer, and it is signed by our mayor, Kevin Glover.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And, and, and thank you for all you contribute on that front. Um, you had your own issue, and, um, we're glad you're, you're well, and, uh-
Thank you.
Thank, thank you for all you do on that front, and continue to do.
I appreciate it, thank you. I just want to make sure that I'm very careful to not take credit for the events in Scotch Plains, that's a student-led event, I am involved in the planning committee for, um, the town in which I work, and our event will be, uh, June seventh to June eighth.
I think you, I think you made that clear, thank you.
Okay, no, thank you.
Um, I think you have skin on the game in the next one, which is why I've asked you to read the next, uh, proclamation or resolution.
Yes.
And I think we have one of our honorees, or one of our two V.
Jessica Fugit is here?
Yes.
Jessica, could you stand up with your family, please, and your friends that are here to support you? I would ask that, um, everybody turn around and face the camera. I asked your family and your friends to stand up because I think it's really important for the community to recognize that the commitments that you've displayed and the work that you've done here really wouldn't be possible without some support and a lot of love from them. So, you're obviously surrounded by incredible people, but I do want to read this, and then I want to name the, um, names of the other young women who couldn't be here tonight, probably because they're out doing good things, so that they're recognized as well. So, whereas Jessica Fugit has earned the highest award in Girl Scouting, the Gold Award, as being honored at a ceremony on May twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, and the Gold Award is the highest achievement that can be earned in Girl Scouting, and the effort to earn this award expresses a special commitment to the community, the world, and the future. And achieving the Gold Award takes discipline, hard work, extensive leadership, involving service to others, initiative, career exploration, the earnest, the earning of interest patches, and the commitment to serving their community and the world. And before beginning a Gold Award packet, the Girl Scout must complete a minimum of four badges known as Interest Project Awards, Senior Girl Scout, Senior Girl Scout Challenge, Senior Girl Scout Leadership, and the Career Exploration Pin, as well as plan and execute a Gold Award project. And for her Gold Award project, Jessica organized and held a no-cost health fair, which included thirty vendors in October two thousand thirteen for Fanwood and Scotch Plains residents, with the goal of making a difference in the community by bringing awareness to good health and well-being for her fellow residents. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Township of Scotch Plains, the Township Council of Scotch Plains congratulates Jessica on having attained the coveted Girl Scout Award, and encourages her to continue to make a difference in the community now and throughout her life. So, Jessica, congratulations to you, honey, why don't you come up and accept this? And I do want to read- Jessica, I'm sorry, why don't you say a few words, if you would like, about your project? But we are going to hang on to this for the May twenty-seventh ceremony, if that's okay?
Because we're going to, I will be joining you all and your, you know, fellow, uh, folks at, at, at your, your wonderful event on the twenty-seventh, and I believe, uh, Ms. Linnell may be joining me as well.
Okay, thank you.
So now say some great things about the people here to support you.
So, I held a community-wide health fair on October fifth of two thousand thirteen with about thirty-five vendors, and I had over two hundred fifty people participate, and it was mainly, I go to, um, the vocational schools, so I'm in the Academy for Alital Sciences, and I want to be a doctor and work with, uh, babies, but I thought doing a health fair would definitely be an interest for me, and it'd be something that I really know about, so I went around to the local community, and I gave out, uh, letters asking people to participate. I got ahold of, like, bigger organizations and told them about it, and I had, like, the American Red Cross came, um, some doctor's office, like the Watch on Pediatrics in Fanwood, they came, so, the Rescue Squad actually came, and the police department, so it was a big event, and I'm very glad that people did come out and support it.
It's an amazing project, Jessica, thank you.
We're very proud of you, Jessica.
And I did want to read off-
Be embarrassed, congratulations.
And I did want to read off the names and the accomplishments of the other young ladies that will be recognized on May twenty-seventh. Megan Costello is also earning the Gold Award, and for her Gold Award project, Megan partnered with the Scotch Plains Fanwood Education and Richmond Foundation to create a music festival which allowed both students and adults from Scotch Plains Fanwood area to come and show off their musical talents and give some time in the spotlight. It helped to boost the reputation of the EEF and allowed more money to come in to support the education system. Charlotte Peach, also earning her Girl Scout Gold Award, developed and implemented a seven-week art therapy program at the Chelsea Senior Living Facility in Fanwood that included years of art lessons and reading countless, and she read countless articles on art therapy and spoke with art therapists. She developed lesson plans, and the program was presented to the Chelsea along with two other senior living facility activities directors. Megan Voorhees is also earning the highest award in Girl Scouting, the Gold Award, and for her project, Megan recruited over forty volunteers to discuss their professions and education with interested students who are enlightened with a greater understanding of various careers and professional pathways, who learned the importance of obtaining business connections, and the Scotch Plains Fanwood High School Student Council will be taking over this event in future years to come. Shannon Burns, for her project, Shannon transformed an existing therapeutic garden at the First Children's School in Fanwood, New Jersey, into an interactive learning environment, sensory garden, I believe, is the name that these environments go under, that enhanced the educational experiences of these special-needs students, where she created an educational, an education fence with multi-sensory educational activities, planted a butterfly garden for the students to observe, and orchestrated spring cleanup of the garden. She created a binder of lesson plans for the teachers for that elementary school that included activities that could be used in other school gardens. And the final honoree for the Girl Scout Gold Award is, oh, I did so well in the last names up until now, um, Jessica Banazak, Benaziac, thank you. Jessica Benaziac developed lesson plans and activities for McGinn Elementary School students specifically designed for students in kindergarten and second grade, educating them on the benefits of composting. By designing and distributing two brochures she prepared, intended to inform and encourage each student and their family to start their own compost pile at home, and I just want to say, greatest on-tap resource in the world is our young women, so I commend all of you for being a part of this incredible organization, the Girl Scouts of America. Thank you again, Jessica.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for that, and congratulations to all. We'll look forward to seeing and being with you on the twenty-seventh of May, uh, when we will hand out these wonderful, uh, awards. Moving on, what more can I say other than, uh, next proclamations, people that I considered, consider members of our extended family. They are here always to support, you know, our well-being. They've done it for seventy-seven years, and I'm referring to our magnificent Rescue Squad. I think reading the proclamation will say it all, but I'm happy to, uh, share with you all that we have several members of the Rescue Squad with us tonight. With that, let me begin. Whereas the Scotch Plains Rescue Squad members are celebrating seventy-seven years of uninterrupted medical volunteer service to the community, and whereas the theme of the two thousand fourteen observance has been designated EMS, Dedicated Neighbors, Helping Neighbors. Whereas the Rescue Squad was originally sponsored by a few who saw a need for such an organization and was formed on March ninth, nineteen thirty-seven, and on April tenth, nineteen thirty-seven, was incorporated as the Scotch Plains Rescue Squad, purchasing its first vehicle from Muhlenberg Hospital for two hundred fifty dollars. And whereas, having started with seventeen original members, the squad now has over ninety-plus volunteer members who have served along with their predecessors over seven hundred combined years of uninterrupted service to the community. And whereas the Scotch Plains Rescue Squad, when needed, also serves other communities for mutual aid response, and whereas the Rescue Squad volunteers respond to emergency calls on a twenty-four-hour basis, and records indicate that the squad answered over seventy-six thousand emergency calls in more than seventy-seven years of service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Kevin Glover, along with members of our Township Council, congratulate present and former members of the Scotch, Scotch Plains Squad on their seventy-seventh anniversary, and hereby proclaim two thousand fourteen as Rescue Squad Seventy-Seventh Anniversary Year in Scotch Plains, and urge all citizens to express their appreciation to these dedicated volunteers who tirelessly give of their time in compassionate, life-saving service to our community. Thank you, and I'd like to present this. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you very much, thank you. And if we could put in a pitch for your fundraising efforts that go on the line which support this valued service to our community?
Well, May is our fundraising month, uh, this is the one time we try to go out and fund drive, it's our, uh, we're a private volunteer organization that, um, we're supported by our annual fund drive. So, we're, this is our annual appeal month, so this is, uh, where do we do two things? We appeal for not only monetary support to buy the equipment and to buy the fuel to, to put out the equipment so we're able to answer the calls, but we're also looking for members to answer those calls, especially the daytime periods. So, um, you know, we're looking for support, daytime support. Um, it's not just, uh, not just for the kids, and it's not just for the adults. I mean, anybody that's out there, I keep hearing, you know, I can't do that. You know, a lot of people say that, but we all said that at one point or another. You know, there's nothing greater than, uh, helping your fellow human beings, so, um, you know, the only payment we get is just, uh, you know, helping someone else. But, uh, it's a great form of payment when you do, and you just say thank you, so, you know, if you can just reach out and, you know, help us with not only the monetary support, but the human support, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. If I may? Thank you for all for being with us today.
I want to thank you for that statement because I think it's really important, and I know it was a real eye-opener to me a few years ago when I learned that you, you, you pay, I, it never in my wildest dreams would I have imagined that as volunteers you also have to pay for the ambulance that you drive and the gas that you put in it, and, and I just, it blows my mind, it really does, and I thank you, and I really do hope that the community rallies around this cause because everybody needs assistance from the Rescue Squad from time to time. And, um, it's great to know that we have such an incredible group of people serving there. I'm sorry that Deacon Bob had to leave, but you'll, it's give the message to him.
You're in school, hopefully. We're okay.
I'd also like to thank all of you for coming here tonight.
Very nice.
We've had the privilege of attending some of your functions and speaking with you and meeting with you personally. I know, Dan, I've expressed to you my feelings about the service that the Rescue Squad performs, and as stated in the proclamation, uh, you perform life-saving services to our community. I can't think of anything that can be more important than that, so, you know, I'm going to embarrass you a little bit, I've told you this privately, but I, I think you're all a bunch of heroes for doing what you do for our community, and thank you from all of us.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, everybody, you heard what he said in his opening remarks. This is their fundraising month, once, one time only. Please, dig deep, or dig a little, and send something to our Rescue Squad, seventy-seven years. Pretty amazing, thank you again, all. The next item on our agenda, a public hearing and follow, and final adoption. Uh, Ms. Lucina, would you read Ordinance, uh, two thousand fourteen, zero, zero, one?
Calendar year two thousand and fourteen, ordinance to exceed municipal budget, cost of living allowance, and to establish a cap bank when the COLA is equal to or less than two point five percent.
Councilman?
I move that public hearing on this ordinance be opened.
Does, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone like to address the council with reference to this ordinance? Seeing no one, councilman?
Move that public hearing be closed.
Is there a second?
A second.
Councilman?
I move that this ordinance be adopted on second and final reading and be advertised according to law.
Uh, may we have a vote on, uh, this roll call? Oh, I'm sorry, did, we, we didn't get a second though. Oh, I'm sorry, we, we didn't get a second though.
We didn't.
A second, please. May I have a second? And now may we have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Gilanella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vasstein?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing and final adoption of the 2014 municipal budget, and I guess I'll turn this over to you, Mr. James.
If I decided to use the wall for the presentation, only because some of the font's kind of small and it's easier for the public to see, so if I could ask some of the, Mr. Gilanella and Mr. Jones to maybe come around, and I can use that wall. I have four copies of the presentation for the council. It's also in your iPad email. You have that open as well, so, or you can just follow along.
Can you? Yep, please.
Thank you. You want one?
Please. Are we going to take another one? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor, public council. I want to start off by informing you of my belief of the state of the township. I believe the state of the financial township, the state of the finances in the township of Scotch Plains is very good. I believe it has been very good for a very long time. Any objective analysis of the finances of this municipality over at least the past decade, if not more, would show that this government, this township, and the variety of governing bodies in the past have operated, you know, with respect to the taxpayers, with an understanding of the need to be frugal, and this budget, I believe, continues that trend. What I'm going to talk to you here today is an overview of the request for the year 2014. The attachments I previously submitted showed that the Scotch Plains budget request is far below the state mandated tax levy cap by $421,449. As of 2013, the average property tax bill in Scotch Plains is $12,127. Noteworthy is the fact that Scotch Plains municipal budget only accounts for approximately 16% of this bill. The 2014 proposed budget produces an average municipal portion of approximately $1,857.62, which amounts to an approximate $11 increase or .009 cents per $100 on the average home assessed at $125,600. Of this total budget, 7% is for the reserve for uncollected taxes, which, as you know, is a state mandated calculation that must be incorporated into our budget document. The remaining 82% goes to support the Scotch Plains Fanwood School District and the Union County Government. As you can see from the chart, over 42% of the discretionary expenses of the budget on the municipal level are directed to the Scotch Plains Police Department and the Department of Public Property and the insurance provided therein. These percentages are consistent across most New Jersey municipalities. Over 2/3 of those expenditures are directed towards the collectively bargained salaries and benefits of those employees. A majority of the revenue in the municipal budget comes from the amount to be raised by taxes. The second primary source of revenue is what is often referred to as state aid. In 2012, the state of New Jersey provided flat aid, which makes up approximately 11% of municipal revenues. The word aid is a bit of a misnomer in that monies received from the state are our energy tax receipts that New Jersey municipalities have long been entitled to. We should be receiving far in excess of what we receive, but we are faced with state legislative policy decisions that make this impossible at the moment. The chart above shows the 10-year trend of the taxes for Union County, the school district, and local government. As you can see, in the past 10 years, Union County has increased 72%, the school district 40%, and local government 29%. And sometimes when you're looking at raw numbers and comparing 2004 to 2014, you know, without taking into inflation, that certainly, you know, can sometimes be a bit unfair and a bit misleading. So this chart shows those increases as it relates to inflation. From left to right, the first column is 2004 actual amount to be raised by taxes by the three main taxing entities. The second column is the 2004 amount adjusted for inflation for 2014. The third column is the 2014 actual amount, and the final column represents the percentage of increase based on inflation. As you can see, Union County in the last 10 years has increased 37% times the rate of inflation, the school district 12.14, and the Scotch Plains Municipal Government 3.33%. I won't get into the details of all the numbers, but as you can see, 2004, the amount to be raised by taxes in Scotch Plains was $12,335,993. That same amount adjusted for inflation today would be $15,481,759, and the current proposed budget only represents an amount to be raised of $15,997,014. Anytime I do a budget presentation, I always do a little, a brief lesson on state aid because it's, like I said before, it's a bit of a misnomer. We hear this term that, you know, the state is doing this great deed by, by giving us money. Hey, guys, we're doing a great thing for you. But the fact of the matter is we're entitled to that money, and it's not really a good deed. It's money that state law says we should be getting, and we're not getting enough. So state aid is the collection and distribution of various energy taxes that were always intended to come to the municipal government. Initially, it was collected by the host municipalities. Per statute, the state of New Jersey took control over the collection and distribution of these energy taxes and promised to return them to the host municipalities by dedicating funds for property tax relief, similar to the way that we collect all the taxes and then we distribute out to the county government and the school district. Instead of that promise, as to be expected, the state government and administrations and legislatures of both political parties diverted these funds and used them to balance the state budget and other state programs. From $72 million in 2005 to $505 million in 2011, that's as of 2011, the diversion of those funds continues to this day. Eventually, there was a lawsuit brought by a state senator on behalf of some of the municipalities, and the Supreme Court, New Jersey State Supreme Court, found that the state can supersede the statute simply by including a provision to that effect in the Annual Appropriations Act, rendering the statute essentially moot. Governor Whitman then signed Chapter 167 PL 1997, the Energy Tax Receipts and Property Tax Relief Act, which replaced the method of distributing these funds guaranteed to municipalities from the state taxation of energy and telecommunications. Two years later, in 1999, a new law was passed that provided that in each year subsequent to state fiscal year 2002, the aid distributions would annually increase at the rate of the implicit price deflator. That's a figure used to measure the impact of inflation on government spending. It's a big step in the right direction. It meant that we might finally start getting what we're entitled to. They now began to call it state aid, as if we should have been thankful for getting the money we were entitled to from the outset. As I'm sure you can imagine, well, maybe not, but as is no surprise to me, Trenton reneged on the initial intent of the 1997 law. And how did they do that? Based on what I said earlier, instead of following the law, they just included a provision to that effect in the Annual Appropriations Act, and administrations and legislators have been complicit in this scheme. Now the state is using those revenues to balance their own budget while exacerbating the local property tax problem, blaming the municipalities. Now, to illustrate this, and I'll make this, any of this available to the public, I know it's difficult to read. We have four main columns. The column on the left is the actual amount of money received by Scotch Plains from 2001 to 2013. As you can see, from 10 to 13, it's been flat. Column two is the price deflator, which we talked about, which is the impact of inflation on government spending. Based on that, what we should have received in the state aid formula column, and as you can see, the parentheses in the Excel spreadsheet always reflects a negative, which means in the last 10 years, or since 2001, I'm sorry, there's been a $10,608,000 deficit. Capital Improvement Program, we're going to look at an ordinance tonight. We've talked about that a couple times in a work session and in the first reading of the ordinance. This is a highlight of some of the things that we're looking to do, you know, not, certainly not all encompassing. From the administration end, we're looking to introduce priority-based budgeting, get a new finance system, and institute citizen request management. The Public Works Department is seeking various equipment, which includes a loader, a single axle dump truck, a pickup truck, an administrative vehicle, and claws that we believe will make the leaf pickup more efficient. Public safety between the fire and the police department, we're looking at a police vehicle, which, as you know, for bonding purposes is an SUV. IT upgrades in the police department, MDTs in the police units. The fire department is looking for pager replacements, red alert, cat system, and a service vehicle. Recreation is going to address IT issues. They're going to be looking at the zoo property and studies and remediation, in addition to Brookside Park as well, and various other equipment. And the library is going to be seeking an HVAC replacement, and as we get more into that, you know, in the next few weeks and months, we'll work out with them how we're going to work, how we're going to do that. In closing, it is my belief that the budget appropriations and the revenue projections as contained in the 2014 budget for Scotch Plains will enable us to meet the public's demands for needs and services. As a municipal government, we have a responsibility to function in the realities of levy caps and reduce staffing and find new ways to be efficient. This is a fluid process that occurs every day of the week, and we're always looking for new ways to conduct business. 2% levy caps make for very nice talking points. They sound very good on a campaign trail, but it does not make the cost of government decrease, nor does it limit a potential tax increase to 2% when you calculate the entire budget. Vendors such as utility companies, IT companies, vehicle manufacturers, office supplies, health insurance companies, et cetera, do not limit their increases to 2% as a result of a state mandated tax levy cap. These increases are often well in excess of 2%, and we have to pay regardless. Offsetting these increases requires creativity, efficiency, and a municipal staff willing to work with the administration. This has happened, and we are confident we can continue this trend. Furthermore, I believe this budget is structured in a fiscally responsible manner to ensure the financial well-being of our municipal government, addressing policy issues of the past and addressing future needs as best as possible. Operating in this efficient manner requires sound leadership reflected in the policy decisions of the governing body and consistent good management practices found throughout this organization. The 2012 budget will enable the municipal organization to continue to operate in the most efficient way possible, given the current economic conditions, state mandates, and declining state aid. With that, I'll turn it over back to the mayor for public hearing, and we'll open it up to the public.
Thank you for that summary of the 2014 municipal budget. May I have a motion to open the public hearing on the 2014 municipal budget?
Yes, Mayor, I move that the public hearing on the ordinance be opened.
Second. Thank you. And would anybody from the audience like to address this council, or they have any Seeing no one, I will move that we close the public hearing, and then prior to our voting on this year's budget, I will ask council if they have any comments that they would like to make. Deputy Mayor, would you like to go?
Yes, Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed.
And as I was just saying, look forward to hearing any comments from our deputy mayor and from the council.
I'd like to comment, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
First off, I'd like to thank our professional staff for their diligent work in preparing this budget, particularly our manager, Jerry Jimes, and our CFO, Lori Majewski. We rely heavily on their professional expertise, and they do an excellent job. The annual budget process is one of our most important responsibilities. We must be efficient and wise with your tax dollars. I got involved in politics because of the heavy property tax burden we all face in New Jersey. It's a big problem. The town collects property taxes, but only has a small part of it that we actually control as a budget, and there'll be more to come on that, and Jerry spoke about that some already. But we do have control over that small piece of the pie, and we take that job very seriously. I'm very happy to be supporting the budget this year because it funds the important priorities and services that citizens expect from municipal government. It does so in a responsible manner. We want to be a AAA-rated community. While we want very low tax increases, we must also be responsible. This is a responsible budget. We want to move forward on important strategic improvements for the town. In particular, this budget restores funding to our library. It funds the start of remediation work at the Brookside Park for the pond. It funds work to be done at Terry Lou Zoo to turn it into a passive park. It also funds important technology and management software initiatives. In particular, I'm excited about the Client Request Management, or CRM, software. I'm optimistic that this will help improve interactions between the constituents and the town and allow for better follow-up and implementation of the services for, for our citizens. But the most important thing that people want to know when it comes budget time is taxes. And I think the best way to explain things, you know, is the old, the old adage, a picture is worth a thousand words. So I actually have a couple charts, if you don't mind. Sorry to make it, dim the lights again, but Jerry, if you could put them up, and then I'll just talk through them real quickly. So this first chart here is a history of Scotch Plains municipal tax increases, percentage by year, and this was really in one of the charts that Jerry showed before, but it just shows year over year what is the percentage increase, and it shows very clearly that this year's budget, this year, sorry, tax levy increase is the lowest increase we've had in about 11 years or more. One other thing that's illustrative here is you can see that, you know, back here in 2009 is when we were hit with a couple issues, namely the sewer issue, as well as the economy as a whole was hit with the financial crisis. Since then, as the economy's recovered, and also of note, around this point in time is when the governor and legislature passed the 2% property tax cap. As a result, largely of those two things, revenue picture's improving and the levy cap, we've seen the tax levy increases in Scotch Plains decreasing year over year. Let me jump to the next slide, please. This is a chart looking at all the different towns in Union County. Again, this is the percentage change in the tax levy year over year. The red line demonstrates the 2% cap, and this is every town's municipal budget increase. Again, different towns all have a Board of Ed component, they have, they all owe money to the county. This is just looking at the municipal finances. So as you compare across the spectrum, you see this year Elizabeth is hiking 6%, Linden 5% at the high end, and you come all the way down to the low end, and here you find Scotch Plains with a .6% increase this year, well underneath the 2% cap. Jump to the next one, please. So the next slide is breaking down your property tax bill into its three components, and again, looking at them on a percentage basis, how much are they going up year over year? The Board of Ed component this year is going up slightly over 4%. Union County's tax bill, even though we collect the taxes, we have to pay it to them, the Union County portion is going up almost 6%, whereas the part of the budget that this body has control over, the municipal component, is going up .6%, well beneath the 2% cap. And Jerry previously alluded to the fact that that cap law, of course, doesn't take into account some realities, and unfortunately, that cap law also allows for various exceptions. So you can see some parts of government are taking use of those exemptions and going well above the 2% cap, whereas here in Scotch Plains, we're staying well beneath the cap. And then Jerry, if you could cut to the final slide. Rather than looking at it in percentage increase, which is sometimes a kind of ambiguous concept for folks, people really want to know, well, what's it mean for me at the end of the day? What's happening with my tax bill? So this is breaking it down for the average Scotch Plains homeowner. And some people might ask, well, what's the average Scotch Plains homeowner or property owner? What I mean by that is, if you're at the average assessed value in Scotch Plains, which is about, you would see on your tax bill, it would say your assessed value is $125,000, if that's what it says, you'd be exactly average, and that equates to about a, to a market value of your house of about half a million dollars. If your house, you could sell your house for half a million dollars, you probably have just about an average tax bill in Scotch Plains. And what that would mean for you this year is that your tax bill is not pretty, is going up $400 year over year for the average taxpayer in Scotch Plains. Why is that? Well, three different entities are contributed to that increase. One is the Board of Education. They're sending you an increased bill for $254. They're sending you an increased bill for two hundred and fifty-four dollars more. Union County is sending you a bill for a hundred and thirty-five dollars more, and this body, the Township Council, is sending you a bill for eleven dollars more than we did last year. If, on the other hand, rather than your home being worth half a million dollar, your home is worth, say, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then your bill, all these numbers would just be cut in half. Similarly, if your house was worth a million dollars, your tax bill will be going up about eight hundred dollars, and the breakdown of that, each bar would be about double what you see here. Hit the lights back up, that's it for the slides. In summary, this is a very good budget. It's responsible, it funds existing services and important strategic initiatives, and it has a very low tax increase. In fact, if our neighbors in Fanwood would remove their insistence on the joint meeting structure for the police department merger, there might have been additional savings. But as it stands, this is the smallest increase in eleven years, one of the smallest in all of Union County, and it is the smallest increase that I believe is also prudent and responsible for the fiscal health of our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Would you like to go down the line, Mayor?
Well, anyone who would like to go next. Mr. Vestine?
I will fold my comments until later.
Okay, I'll go. I don't have a written statement. Those of you who know me know that I work full-time, I take my council duties very seriously, I'm raising two young children, and occasionally I actually watch clothes for my husband, who probably would disagree with you, disagree with me if he was here to hear me say that. But I will tell you that I do think very often about ways to improve the township. It has never been my belief that we should stand up and point the finger at other people when we really should be looking at ourselves and looking at the job that we are doing. Would I like our county taxes to be lower? Absolutely. Would I like our school taxes to be lower? Absolutely. I would be foolish if I sat up here and said, I absolutely would like us to continue to pay money to the county at that rate, or continue to pay money to the school board at that rate. But what I will say is this, for the money that we pay to our Board of Education, the children of Scotch Plains and Fanwood receive a superior education. Our schools are excellent, and as a result of that, property tax values in Scotch Plains and Fanwood stay very high. People move here for our schools. If you look at the amount of money that we are paying in county property taxes, I agree, that number's high. Keep in mind, though, that the county provides to us a service that is significant, significant expense, that we do not provide to the residents, and that is housing the prisoners of Union County, in addition to many other services provided by the county. The cost to provide a number of these services is astronomical. Would I encourage the county freeholders to continue to find ways to lower the amounts of money being taxed on suburban communities? Absolutely, I would do so. But I would really want residents to be very mindful that the quality of services that we are receiving, when we seek them, is superior in coming from the county. That's something that we should be cautious of when we start to look at dollar amounts. What troubles me more than the eleven dollars is what our residents are getting in Scotch Plains, or not getting, is probably a better way to explain this. Chief Mahoney, I'm not saying this because you're here, but I think our police department is superior. I think our officers do an excellent job. I think we live in a very safe community. And obviously, we had some very good publicity this year to reinforce that. I commend you, and I commend your officers. And I would have done so, I would have done so had you not been here this evening. You have my word. But I am very disappointed that we have not had any real meetings since the last election. We've had some jabs in newspapers, and we've had some different comments spread out through the media, and through rumor, some private meetings perhaps, but as far as I'm aware, there has not been a formal meeting where Fanwood has said that they would not change their position, or Scotch Plains has not really looked for a significant or real solution in bringing this police merger to a reality. You can have your thoughts about the style of merger that was introduced publicly last year, but to say that there could have possibly been savings is an absolute misspoken phrase at best. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the first year isn't the possibility of savings. These are very real numbers, people. And for that, what we could have done with that eleven dollars is picked up your bulk garbage without charging you a hundred dollars. You want to talk about services to the library, we could have done amazing things at the library. We could have done something about our two decaying fire departments, our firehouses, so that the volunteers who serve us in the community in that aspect had very real resources available to them. Our recreation programs wouldn't have to be self-funded if we had additional ways to save money within our portion of the budget. It's not our job on this council to sit up here and point the finger at the county, or talk about what the state isn't providing us, or look at the Board of Education. Our job is to fix the part that we have control over. So let me tell you, I wish we weren't raising your taxes eleven dollars, but in reality, we are. What I would very much rather see is that we were doing something better for you for that eleven dollars, that our public works were what it should be in this town, and that other aspects of this community served its residents like our school board is. So keep that in mind as we continue the comments along the dais, but I would commend you, Jerry, for doing the best that you can with the money that is available to you, and trying your best to keep property taxes low. I would encourage us in the future to do a better job of funding recreation, and to remedy some of the past ills that have taken place in the decay of buildings such as the Shady Rest. I would also like to thank you for the time that you put into the budget. I appreciate it tremendously. I will not be supporting this budget for all of the reasons that I have said previously tonight. I encourage the residents of Scotch Plains to pay very careful attention, and to talk to the five people who sit up here, and tell them to be responsible for our piece of the pie. Thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman. Please.
I don't share that view of Scotch Plains. I have a very different view of our town, and I think that that view is in a much more positive light about what happens in our town and what we offer to our residents. I want to congratulate and thank Lori Majewski, our CFO, and Jerry Jimes, our town manager, for their work and efforts in preparing this budget this year. Lori, as she has done every year, has taken the time to discuss the budget with me, answer my questions, provide explanations and guidance, as has Jerry this year also. Both of them have done a very good job of preparing and crafting this budget for 2014. They're both very knowledgeable and about municipal budget issues and preparation, and are extremely valuable to our town. The results of this year's budget speak for itself. My review and understanding and analysis of this year's budget reveals that the budget maintains our municipal services, appropriates and allocates our funds, taxes, revenue, and resources fairly, to keep our level of investment in the police, DPW, recreation, municipal court, the library, at the appropriate level, to ensure that Scotch Plains residents continue to receive the municipal services we require and expect, and continue to enjoy the high quality of life that we value in Scotch Plains. Guess the councilwoman has left. This budget has the lowest tax levy increase in over a decade to Scotch Plains residents. The municipal or town portion of the Scotch Plains residents' property tax bill this year will increase by only six tenths of one percent, as indicated previously. This converts to an average tax increase to Scotch Plains residents for the municipal portion of your property tax bill of eleven dollars. That's good. All things considered, but that doesn't tell the full story about what Scotch Plains residents will experience in terms of our entire tax bill for 2014, which also includes, as you've heard, the school taxes and the county taxes. That's where Scotch Plains residents are going to be hit hard this year in tax increases. The municipal portion of property tax, the tax rate for this year, will only be nine tenths of one penny more than it was in 2013, the lowest in over a decade. We are able to offset the taxes to our residents from this budget by over two point seven million dollars. Two million seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, to be exact, in funds have been used and appropriated in this budget to keep taxes, the municipal portion of your taxes, from increasing beyond the eleven-dollar average increase to our residents. The funds we are using to offset any additional tax on our residents is four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars more than was used last year to offset any further tax increase at that time. We must consider the overall fiscal health of the town when determining how the budget is crafted. All things considered, this budget is fair, reasonable, sensible, and fiscally responsible for our town and our residents. We are fortunate that we are not seeing an increase in our municipal portion of taxes like they will experience in some of our neighboring towns. For example, in Fanwood, they will see a three point two percent increase in taxes. A one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar increase in the tax levy, that converts to a seventy-two dollar increase if you live in Fanwood. In Westfield, they will see a sixty-three dollar increase, with over a six hundred thousand dollar levy increase to their taxes. With this budget, we are able to restore the library budget to a fair and appropriate level, which will allow the library to reopen on Sunday hours, starting in September, and also Monday mornings, starting in June. That's good news for our residents. It's the right thing to do for our community. By increasing the funding to the library, which was cut in last year's budget, regrettably by the mayor and Councilwoman Jelenella, Scotch Plains residents will be able to use the services that the library offers without the restrictions that were directly caused by the bad decision made last year to cut funds to the library that I opposed. The library, the library is an extremely important service to our community and our residents, from preschool to high school to seniors. I am very pleased that last year's cut to the library budget is being corrected, and many Scotch Plains residents will benefit from this appropriation to the library in this year's budget. That's the good news. The bad news is Scotch Plains residents will see an increase in property taxes amounting to an average two hundred and fifty-four dollar increase, as indicated by Councilman Jones, coming from the school board, and will see an average one hundred and thirty-five dollar increase coming from the county, as stated. That's about a four hundred dollar increase in property taxes this year for our residents. We don't control any of that portion of the property tax bill. Eighty-three percent of residents' property tax bill is out of our control. Town government controls sixteen or seventeen percent of the tax bill, and we are trying to keep the taxes as low as we can reason, as low as we reasonably can. This year, that comes to an eleven dollar average for the municipal portion, which pales in comparison to the other increases that we will see in property taxes. Unfortunately, that's not good news for Scotch Plains residents overall. That affects all of us, everyone up here, including myself. With the guidance, advice, and knowledge of our professional financial staff, this municipal budget provides the lowest municipal tax increase we've seen in years, and certainly in my four years serving on this council. We want to keep our municipal portion of taxes as low as possible, and we are working toward that end. We are working with our professionals in that effort to keep the part of our tax bill paid to the town for municipal taxes as low as possible, not just in the short term, but in the long-term future of Scotch Plains. The management and handling of this year's budget addresses the issues we face for 2014, and attempts to put our town on secure footing for the years to come, so we can also keep property taxes down in the future, and not see the type of increases seen this year in other towns, or previously experienced in this town. As an aside, during my three years, my previous three years on this council, we saw the following tax increases in the municipal portion of your property tax bill. In 2011, it was a four point seven cent increase. That came to an average fifty-seven dollars, thirty-nine cents increase in property taxes. 2012, it was approximately a two point nine cent increase, a thirty-four dollar average tax increase to our residents. Last year, 2013, we saw about a one percent increase in the tax levy, and a seventeen dollar average increase to our residents. You've heard the numbers for this year, there's been a steady decline. We are making progress. What we do this year will have a bearing on what happens next year to our budget. These decisions are important to all of us, and affect all taxpayers in Scotch Plains. Planning and reasonableness is what's needed in this regard, not a short-term advantage. So what's the solution to what Scotch Plains residents will see in 2014 for property tax increases? There is no magic bullet, but our task as elected officials is to work with our financial and municipal government officials to achieve the best result we can for our taxpayers, and to keep taxes as low as we reasonably can for our residents. I am comfortable, for the reasons mentioned, and for the reasons explained to me by our professional staff, that this budget is fair, reasonable, sensible, fiscally responsible, and prudent for our residents and our town. This municipal budget maintains our municipal services, and preserves the quality of life we expect and value in Scotch Plains. This budget, I believe, is in the best interest of our town and our residents for 2014, and hopefully for the years to come. I will vote to support the budget.
Thank you, councilwoman. Mr. Vestine?
I'm not yet ready to comment, please go ahead.
If you're not, I'm going to defer my comments until you are ready, so we can sit here till eleven o'clock at night, and wait for you to prepare and get ready, or we'll call for a vote. I couldn't agree more. So unless you are ready, surprised you're not, not going to have a political stunt, but I'm calling for a vote on the budget, since Mr. Vestine has no comments. And we have a roll call. Can we have, excuse me, I apologize? I'd like to close, you know, the comments, and we need, Ms. Lozina?
Motion.
A motion to have a vote on the 2014 municipal budget.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to have a vote on the 2014 municipal budget.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
We have a roll call.
Mrs. Jelenella?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vestine?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Nay, a thousand times. Thank you. Regrettably, I didn't have the votes to see that this year there would be a little increase.
Point of order.
Yeah, point of order.
Your comments closed. Yeah, point of order. You voted in the negative. You're not allowed to make a comment.
I did. Thank you.
However, our rules do allow members of the council...
If you would like to comment, will you like to comment now?
Our, our rules allow...
We just had a vote on the budget.
Point of order, our rules allow for those voting in the affirmative to make comments after a vote. And if our attorney would like to verify that, I would be more than happy to wait for his verification. Voting in the negative does not allow you to make comment. Voting in the affirmative does.
Robert's Rules. The answer is? Yeah, it's never come up to me, so recognizing that.
Oh, because you're an expert on Robert's Rules. I'll look it up right now and come back to you.
We've had, we've had a vote on the budget. We're moving on. Ms. Lasina, would you read ordinance 2014-002?
Bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new or additional, new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new communication and signal system equipment, new information technology equipment, and new automotive vehicles, including original apparatus and equipment in, by, and for the township of Scotch Plains in the County of Union, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $1,525,000 to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Thank you. Councilman, Deputy Mayor?
I move that the public hearing on this ordinance be opened.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Then we have a vote.
Mr. Lawrence?
Ayes.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Would anyone like to address the council with reference to this ordinance? Seeing no one coming forward, Deputy Mayor?
I move that the public hearing be closed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, please.
I move that this ordinance be adopted on second and final reading and be advertised according to law.
Is there a second?
Seven.
And we have a vote.
This is a roll call. Mrs. Jelenella?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vestine?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Excuse me, could you, what was the roll call again? I kept having a problem hearing.
Mrs. Jelenella, no. Mr. Jones, yes. Mr. Marcus, yes. Mr. Vestine, yes.
Okay, thank you. I apologize, but as I explained to the Deputy Mayor, I'm really having a problem hearing out of my ear, left ear. Nay is my vote. Okay, let's see. What do we have up next? We have approval of the council minutes.
Yes, may I move for approval? The council minutes for meetings of April 1, 2014, and April 17, 2014.
Is there a second?
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next thing on our agenda is manager's report.
Mayor, all my comments were related to the budget or any of the subsequent resolutions, so as they come up, I'll comment.
Okay, thank you. Reports of special committees, please.
I have something, Mayor.
Thank you.
Earlier, we had the loss of two Scotch Plains residents. It's a particularly saddening situation because they were married to each other and they have children. This is something that I'm bringing forward to you as the liaison to the PTA and the liaison to the Board of Education. There are two young children in our school system, and I do want to read to you a letter that was co-signed by two of our principals about a fund that is underway to assist the family. Those of you who are not familiar, this was a very early morning, I believe, a 4:00 a.m. accident on Route 78. So I'll, I'll read to you the letter from the, the two principals. Dear Brunner and McGinn families, many of you have reached out with warm wishes and office of support as a result of the passing of two of our students' parents last weekend. Your kindness and love have helped our staff to help them and help our students this week. From the bottom of our hearts, we thank you. We have brought your messages of hope and love to the student's family, who are also grateful. In time, with guidance from the family, we will provide ways in which you can support them in the short and long term. Arrangements for the passing, arrangements, the funeral arrangements were indicated here as well. Then there was also information about the, the collections that are underway. What I'm going to do is I'm going to ask that Mayor and Jerry, we could put maybe something on the township website so that individuals who are not associated with the schools and may not have otherwise received this information can help to make donations to the funds. Would that be something that we would be okay with? And I would just ask that the community keep, the word students, you can see, is plural. So there are multiple children affected by this loss. It's obviously a tragedy for the family, and I would ask that we all continue to keep them in our prayers. Thank you for that. Strategic planning is something that, that continues to be underway. Mr. Jones and I had the pleasure of attending the last meeting, and we were working together in the same room. A lot of repeated themes have come up. I believe that one theme that was expressed, you know, again and again, was a desire for full-day kindergarten. There were other, other discussion points that were offered as far as continuing to increase the variety of opportunities open to our students of the high school. I would encourage you, as I have in the two prior meetings, to make yourselves really available to the strategic planning process. Strategic planning is not something that should only involve educators and parents. It should involve all members of the community, because as I said earlier, much of your property tax value is really rooted in the, in the success of our school system, and you should be aware, very well aware, of what is happening there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that certainly was tragic news, and thank you for sharing it with us. Our prayers go out to the family. Are there any other committee reports?
A number of announcements here through the Recreation Commission. I will start off with one. I've read this before. This comes from Union County, actually. Again, this is, this is a program that provides assistance, paratransit service for veterans, which I guess is extremely timely considering we're approaching Memorial Day, with a grant from the state of New Jersey, three days a week. County can offer to veterans who need transportation, veterans hospitals, and other locations for medical assistance. If there are any veterans that have that need, please call 908-241-8300, and they will connect you with the appropriate person. From the Recreation Commission, there are some trips coming up. The Scotch Plains Golden Ager's Club is sponsoring a trip to the Showboat Casino in Atlantic City on Tuesday, June 10. The cost for the trip is $25, which includes a bus ride and a $25 slot play credit at Showboat. Trip leaves at 9:30 a.m. from Scotch Hills Country Club and returns the same day. For more info or to sign up, please contact Jean at 889-4121. Hi, Jean. Senior Citizen Advisory Trips. The Senior Advisory Committee will have trips featuring a karaoke cruise around New York and New Jersey from Chelsea Piers on July 16, as well as a show and lunch at the Crystal Point Yacht Club in Point Pleasant on August 13. Registration for the karaoke cruise will begin next Tuesday, May 27, with the cost of $58 per person. Trip includes bus ride, cruise, entertainment, and lunch. Additionally, registration for the trip to Crystal Point Yacht Club will begin on June 3. Registration can be done online by visiting the town's website and clicking Community Pass link, or in person by visiting the Recreation Department in Room 113. Senior Transportation. Transportation for residents who are senior citizens is available and provided free of charge by the township. Our bus service includes transportation to senior social clubs, shopping and mall trips, as well as medical transportation on an as-needed basis. To register or for more information, please contact our dial or ride number at 908-322-5151. For information on any of these programs, please contact the Recreation Office at 908-322-6700, extension 223. There's more. Below are some recreation announcements. Small Fry Camp Registration. Small Fry Camp for children ages three to five and have yet to attend kindergarten is now open for registration. The Rec Commission offers three two-week sessions with two time slots for each session, spaces limited in each session, and time slot. Each session has a 9:00 a.m. to 11:15 a.m. slot, which is $140 per session, and an 11:30 a.m. to 1:45 p.m. slot, which is $110 per session. You can register online, visiting the town's website and then Community Pass link. Scotch Hills Golf Registration. 2014 golf memberships at Scotch Hills Golf Course at Shady Rest are now available. Members receive reduced green fees, email updates, free lessons, and more. Registration can be done online, same way. Summer Basketball League. Summer Basketball League will begin registration tomorrow, Wednesday, May 21, at 8:30 a.m. for those entering grades three through ninth in the upcoming school year. Games take place on Monday and Thursday nights at Kramer Manor Park, as well as several other Scotch Plains parks. The fee to register is $85, and registration can be done online, same way. Township's Facebook page. We encourage all residents to visit and like the township's Facebook page, which can be accessed by visiting facebook.com/ScotchPlainsTownship, along with township information and updates. You'll find recreation program information, class, changes, and cancellations on our township's page. And the Field Closure Facebook page, in addition to the township page. The Scotch Plains Rec Department has created a Facebook page to update athletic field closures on a daily basis. This page will be updated when weather has affected our facilities. Additionally, the Scotch Plains Rec Department is coordinated with the Fanwood Rec Department and the Board of Ed, so that all fields that are used in Scotch Plains and Fanwood will be updated on the page. To like and receive updates, please visit www.facebook.com/spffields. SPF, yeah, that's right, SPF Fields. And I believe that is all I have, Mayor.
Well, I'm telling you, you thought it was, you thought it was going to be easy being the latest onto the Rec Department.
Never, never.
Yeah, that was a lot of information. Hopefully, everybody digested it. Mickey?
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, if I may. As was mentioned earlier in the meeting, we have formed a Downtown Development Committee. At our last meeting, we actually appointed members to that committee, and there was an additional person that was submitted. Unfortunately, that night, the person was submitted the same day, and our rules require 14-day advance submission of people. But after further review and some due diligence, personally, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Catherine Dreyer to the Downtown Development Committee for Scotch Plains.
A second there. Okay, how do we move that? Just have a vote? Let's, an aye vote? Up and down? We have a motion? We have a second?
Would you like to...
Just want to make sure I missed the Councilman Vestine?
I, I, I would like to say something.
If anyone has any comments, I mean...
I would like to thank the council for supporting my nomination for Catherine Dreyer. She is a superior woman, not political. She has given her heart and soul to this community since moving here with her family, very actively involved in St. Bartholomew's. She is extremely intelligent. She's really the leading force behind the newcomers club. She will offer a great deal. She also is the first woman, the only woman, put forward, and I think that that's unfortunate. I was very disheartened that an entire slate of candidates was recommended at the last meeting, and not a single woman was included. If you really look at the statistics about who is going to shop and spend money and spend time in the downtown area, you have to remember the ladies, a very wise woman once said. I would ask the council to continue to be mindful that this is a committee that must have diversity in socioeconomic groups. It should have diversity in educational backgrounds. It should have diversity in gender. It should have diversity in every possible aspect. Scotch Plains is very unique in its genuine diversity. I'm disappointed by the original slate of candidates because it is lacking, but what it does include is two members that do not live in Scotch Plains, and that is extremely disheartening to me, specifically because...
Excuse me, point of order. I mean, you know, you're rehashing a previously voted upon resolution at this point.
May she finish her comment?
That's not what we're here for.
Please.
I, Councilman Marcus, I don't know what point of order you're, you're making, but I, but I do know...
You just, you just heard the point of order.
I do know...
You're complaining about a previously voted upon resolution.
She's finished.
I mean, what is, what is the point of doing that at this meeting?
Deputy Mayor, allow her to finish her thought.
Councilman Marcus, if you don't mind, you do have...
Let's not have a debate here. Let's finish your thoughts.
You have a habit. You have a habit of not allowing me to finish my thoughts.
We all have a habit of listening to you complain ad nauseam about things that are irrelevant, so I would ask that that...
Now, I will have a point of order, and that is a clear violation of Robert's Rules for a councilman to attack another councilman.
I'm not attacking.
Well, I see it as, I see it as a rebuttal and an attack, and I think it's inappropriate, so let's be done with it, folks.
Well, I think it's inappropriate to continue to make those comments.
Anybody else have any comments?
Maybe we can have a vote? I was going to say, let's, thank you very much.
I'm not finished.
Let's get it done, please.
I'm not finished.
Counselor, thank you.
This was not an item that was on the agenda, but I am happy that Councilman Vestine did see fit to bring it forward. A second woman was also, the resume of a second woman was also put forward 14 days ago. I'm hoping that the council also see foot to vote her onto this council, given her proximity to the downtown in her residence and her extremely strong resume. So I, I thank you, and I appreciate your support on this.
If I could have an opportunity to comment, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Just to the Councilwoman's final point, I do believe that the second nominee that was made is one of the candidates for political office this year, and one of the points that was embodied in a lot of the discussion when this committee was created was trying, was to try and remove a lot of the political agendas from, from this commission in light of the fact that past downtown efforts, namely the CID, suffered from a lot of political involvement. So it, it seems to me illogical, therefore, that we would support a nominee who's a political candidate to this commission.
The only comment I would have there, Councilman, is that, you know, if I read the resolution correctly, it was if someone was holding office, if someone running for office. I don't see where that is.
I, I agree with you.
So we have enough politics in this town, so I just want to clarify.
I didn't, I didn't say that, that that person was...
Okay.
By the letter of the law precluded. I was saying according to the spirit of the law, it didn't make any sense to me.
We will all consider her nomination, and we will vote on it, folks, enough.
If I may comment?
Please.
I, I truly appreciate the gracious thanks that we received for doing this. It's unfortunate that it was followed up by a backhanded slap. I, I think that in looking at the people that we've appointed to this committee, we looked at the people's backgrounds, we didn't look at their gender, we didn't look at their race, we didn't look at their religion, we didn't look at anything other than what their qualifications were. And those qualifications range from development as a living, doing, making, doing downtown development as a living. It ranged from a 30-plus-year career in municipal planning... It ranged from a 30-plus-year career in municipal planning. It ranged from people who owned property in the business district and who were involved previously in a process similar to this. It involved our township attorney, who I know does not live in town, recently he moved. But having served on a very similar committee and being our township attorney, I thought that his involvement would be very valuable and provide a bridge or a liaison to the council as someone that we can rely upon. We keep referring to someone else that somehow doesn't have skin in the game because they don't live in town. I asked the mayor if he believes that having skin in the game or being a constituent only involves people who vote, at which point he said yes. However, the other person that they keep wanting to refer to does own property in Scotch Plains, does pay property taxes in Scotch Plains, and frankly is involved in the development in Fannwood at Fannwood Crossing. So, I don't know what better value or credentials we could have for someone that we're looking to do some development of our downtown. I find it very disheartening that the individuals on this governing body would demean the selection of people. In the very same meeting that we honor volunteers in town, they would demean people that are willing to step forward and volunteer to see what we can do with our downtown. Keeping in mind that for every commercial ratable that we can generate in downtown, we offset the requirement or the demand of tax revenue from the homeowners. So, as I said, I do appreciate the gracious thank you for our action tonight. I wish it hadn't not been followed up with a rather ungracious slap at the process. Thank you.
Well, as always, thank you for your comments, and to be continued, I'm sure, at best, it's an interesting committee, you know? Certainly look forward to hearing more from them.
We had a motion and a second.
Wait, I just, I wanna vote now. All in favor of our latest, you know, candidate? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we can move on, councilor, correct?
Well, then, I would like to, in light of the fact that we're deviating from the agenda, Mayor...
Well, I know where we're deviating from the agenda. I mean, we're talking special committees now?
No, Councilman Vastine deviated from the agenda by making a motion at a business meeting that was not previously set forward, so I would like to also then make a motion to nominate Luisa Bianco as submitted 14 days prior to this meeting to serve on the committee. I would call to mind that her credentials are amazing. She has a vested interest in this community as a mother of young children. She is a career woman, she is highly educated, and can contribute a great deal to this board. I would also like to say that we have several members of one political party on this committee, and I would just say, that's fine. I think we can all contribute a great deal, but let's not say that something isn't political when there are many members of one political party on there. This is not an elected official. She's in no way violating the ordinance by submitting her resume for this.
Councilor, we can take that nomination? Just trying to keep us out of trouble here. I will second Councilwoman Gilanella. I don't see where there should be an objection. I mean, clearly, it's been expressed that more the merrier. So, I will say, may we have a vote? I will say aye. Aye, nays?
Nay.
Nay.
So, much for fairness, folks. Let's move on. I have something, in spite of everything and all the rhetoric you've heard tonight, we really are a nice bedroom community. And I will tell you, as mayor, I get the opportunity to attend some activities within our community that are truly remarkable and rewarding. Yesterday was one of those days for me, when I participated and watched about a dozen volunteers from the Park Middle School. Do our plantings on Park Avenue. And if you've not been on Park Avenue on the last day, I encourage you to do such. I mean, these young kids, seventh graders from Park Middle School, were absolutely amazing. They were there at nine o'clock, stayed through to 12. I'm sure some of you in the audience have seen their fine work. And in a way of saying our appreciation, we are really a good community, in spite of what you hear here sometimes, you'll get the impression. I'm gonna invite them to our next meeting, so this council can thank our finest, our youngsters, for their outstanding work and contributions to our community. That's all I have to say, folks. We'll move on. Do I have a motion to move the new business consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move for approval, the consent agenda, and I'll very quickly read through it.
Well, I'm gonna ask Mr. Giles to go through them.
Second. Okay.
Wow, we just quit on the draw. Mr. Giles, please?
That's okay. Sure. O-83 discusses resolution authorizing corrections to the billing. O-84 is a self-examination. Division of Local Government Services has recognized that we're a community who submits a responsible budget and allows us to self-examine our own budget based on the factors determined in the budget. O-85 is a resolution authorizing the release of a performance bond that's been determined at all of the, everything's in good working order. O-86 is a resolution awarding a project known as Westfield Avenue, Section 2, Millennial Top Course paving that went out to bid a few weeks ago. Z Brothers Concrete Contractors was the lowest responsible bid. That's been reviewed by council, and there have been no objections to that bid. O-87 is authorizing the contractor purchase of a replacement back body for a vacuum sale that also went out to bid, and the lowest responsible bidder was given that award. That's been reviewed by legal and approved as well. O-88 is authorizing the submission of our tonnage grant application. We don't know how much exactly is going to be received until that application goes in. O-89 is awarding automotive parts and accessories under state contract, T-2761, not to exceed $19,000 for Public Works and Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. We've had a motion, we've had a second. Ms. Lucina, can you, does anyone have any questions on any of these before we call the roll?
Do we need a roll call for consent?
Yes, we need, we're spending money. So, please, Ms. Lucina?
Mrs. Gilanella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vastine?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. Next item on our agenda is may I have a motion to move the bill resolution?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move for approval, the Bill List Resolution in the amount of
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms., well, we're gonna take a roll call on this, but does anybody have any questions on the bill list? Hearing none? Would you please call the roll, Ms. Lucina?
Mrs. Gilanella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vastine?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. May I have a motion to move Resolution 2014-090?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move for approval, Resolution 2014-090, waiving the bonding requirements and application fees for any vendors seeking to sell goods during the township's 2014 Memorial Day Parade.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, do we need a roll call on this?
We do, because I'm in your business.
All right, so, does anyone have any questions? I think this is self-explanatory. We've done this for the last 50 years, I believe. Not hearing any. I like that, right? Let's have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Gilanella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vastine?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. Ms. Lucina, can you read Ordinance 2014-003?
An Ordinance Supplementing and Amending the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of Scotch Plains, Chapter 7, entitled Traffic With Regard to Speed Limits on Jerusalem Road.
Okay, we have read it, Ms. Councilman. Deputy Mayor, please?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to move that this ordinance be adopted on first reading and be advertised according to law in the Scotch Plains Times, and that copies be available in the clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board, the second and final reading in public hearing on same to be held on?
June 17.
June 17, at 7:00 p.m. in the Municipal Building, Park Avenue, Scotch Plains.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, do we wanna have a little explanation here, please?
Sure. Based on the memorandum written by Sergeant Hernandez that was received by the council at the last meeting, he's recommending lowering the speed limit to Jerusalem, on Jerusalem Road in all directions, the entire length to 30 miles an hour. Sergeant Hernandez used recognized traffic study techniques and procedures to make his recommendation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Giles. Does anyone have any comments? Otherwise, I'll call for a roll call. Ms. Lucina?
Mrs. Gilanella?
I thought we were gonna hear from the chief today, and that's why he's present. I was hoping that he was here to bring his expertise forward.
Yeah, he's here after the second, if anybody, if you have any questions.
I asked, would you like to hear from the chief?
Yes, I love hearing from the chief. That's why I asked him to be here.
Chief, she paid you a wonderful compliment before, I think we're talking about the 30 mile an hour speed limit. This is an introduction. We have 30 days to review this for our final vote.
Chief, did you bring your own PowerPoint as well, or...
No, it was a memo. I was gonna read the memo to you.
Please, let's summarize it.
You missed the last meeting where I did explain...
Tell us 30 miles an hour, chief.
That I can read, I don't need you to read to me. But I do like hearing from you because it's helpful to me. This is important, and speeding on our streets is a problem.
What I want to hear is, we looked at problem areas in town, which we're often tense with, and I sent traffic here on out to do a study, make recommendations. We've seen the characteristics in these two roads. These two roads in general, we look at complaint areas and problem areas all over town continuously every year, and we bring recommendations to the council after we conduct the studies. In this case, in general, both of these roads, the characteristics of both of these roads have changed a great deal over the years, over the last 10, 20 years. We've seen a lot of building being done. These streets were a lot more rural many years ago. There's a lot more residential homes, businesses that pop up, and we'd just like to see the speed limits a little more consistent and a lower speed limit to increase the safety of not only the motorists, but potentially pedestrians or bicyclists.
Chief, we're gonna have another ordinance on Raritan. Ditto your comments?
Correct.
I know we like hearing from you, but we'll spare you on this one.
Chief, while you're here, I'd like to ask you one question on a slightly different road than these ordinances. Could you maybe speak to Cooper Road? I know in the past, this council lowered speed limit on Cooper, it's similar in that it's a very narrow road, but it's a major thoroughfare.
Right.
It's a low speed limit, it's 25 miles an hour. I know that myself, I get comments from people in public who are concerned about speeding there. I also get comments from people in the public who hate the fact that the speed limit is so low, it takes a long time to get there. I was wondering if you could just speak to any enforcement issues in that area? Is that, you know, is that an area you guys have been targeting a lot? Things okay there? Is it still a safety concern?
We targeted Cooper Road quite a bit in the last couple of months, most notably because of the construction issues on Raritan Road. We found that Cooper Road then becomes the cut-through when there was detours and traffic diversions out on the other side of town. Cooper Road is a cut-through many, many years ago. The trees have grown along the side of Cooper Road to the point where they're moving into the roadway. It is a narrow roadway. There's sidewalks in some parts of Cooper Road, there's not sidewalks in others. The county has placed the, you know, we have the park out there now that's increased traffic on Cooper Road. So, in response to all of those things, we did do some directed patrols out on Cooper Road. There were a number of summonses issued over about a three-month period, and so we've seen the speed limits now that the construction on Raritan is done, you know, we've seen the speed limits come a little back to normal, that there's less traffic. We find there's less volume on Cooper Road.
Thanks very much.
With that in mind, you brought up, Councilman, Cooper Road. This is toward you, Mr. Giles. I had asked a long, long time ago about the stumps that are on Cooper, close to Martine, on that property. I believe, I could be wrong, that that's township property, and we were to try to grind them out. I mean, if you wanna talk about a safety hazard, I think, chief, someone even doing 25 miles an hour, they slip and hit one of those stumps, I mean, they're gonna be in some serious trouble. So, I know I've asked you months ago, and I was given a reason that it was a county road, and I don't recall it being a county road. So, it literally is a foot off the blacktop, McCattan. So, you know, if we're talking public safety and lowering, you know, speed limits, I would hope that that gets done soon, okay?
So, I just wanted to know, 30, 25? I mean, I'm anxious to hear your thoughts as far as the speed limit and what you think is most appropriate.
We looked at, like the manager said, we looked at things that are typically used in traffic studies, and there are two different definitions of roadways that are used around the state as a residential district or a suburban sort of a residential district. We found that those streets, they are basically through streets, they're not totally residential, so we felt like that we would split it right down the middle between 35 and 25. Jerusalem Road in particular has a lot of businesses on the top side of Jerusalem Road. It transitions around a steep bend and a steep curve and a sharp bend down to a residential neighborhood. The speed limits were different on both ends of the road. There's been, the senior houses were built up off of Jerusalem Road. There's a lot of truck traffic that comes in and out, so we felt like 30 would be adequate on the whole stretch of road. 25, I don't think is, you know, more reserved for side streets on a residential neighborhood and school zones.
We had a presentation at the last meeting by a resident who is an advocate for complete streets. One of the things that she talked about was there are statistics that say, basically, when a street is more narrow, people kinda self-govern. They slow down themselves because the street is more narrow, it's a little bit more difficult to navigate. My concern is especially the width of Jerusalem. It's pretty wide, you know, and it's long. There's not a lot of interruption there, and you could drive straight through and really lose mindfulness of your speed.
And they have parking on both sides, on the sides of Jerusalem as well, though.
But it's no Cooper as far as width of the road, it's significant.
Right.
I mean, is there anything else we could do there as far as, you know, some of the ideas that were put forward, Jerry, with the complete streets, you know, really indicating, you know, bike, bicycle path, you know, what the bicycle line would be, some of these strategies? I think it would be really helpful, and I appreciate your coming today.
It's a pretty steep hill. I'm not riding a bike up that hill.
Well, there are others that may.
Please, I've read it.
Jerry runs that, that hill.
So, could we consider, I think it would be really helpful...
I did see the presentation, and I've talked to some of my counterparts around the county in some of the areas where they've done the same presentation. I would welcome the opportunity to meet with that woman, her name escapes me, but...
I can give you her contact information, and she lives right in town, so it's a resource that I really would like us to...
We've looked at that part of her presentation. We did look into the grant program for the bike paths some years back, weren't considered for it, but it's something that could help us.
So, 30?
It's 30 miles an hour. Can we have, we need a roll call here, right? Please, Ms. Lucina?
Mrs. Gilanella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Vastine?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. Okay, maybe we can get through the next one a little quicker, since we've had that wonderful review by you, chief. All right, Ms. Lucina, please read the next ordinance.
An Ordinance Supplementing and Amending the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of Scotch Plains, Chapter 7, entitled Traffic With Regard to Speed Limits on Raritan Road.
Mayor, I would like to move that this ordinance be adopted on first reading and be advertised according to law in the Scotch Plains. be advertised according to law in the Scotch Plains Times, and the copies be available in the clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board the second and final reading in public hearing on same to be held on June seventeen, twenty-fourteen, at seven P.M. in the Municipal Building Park Avenue, Scotch Plains.
Is there a second? Are there any comments?
Chief, is it your opinion or your conclusion that you still stand behind the recommendations of this memo as well?
Absolutely.
Memo we received three weeks ago? Thank you.
Okay, with that, we've had a motion.
Chief, it's always a pleasure to see you. Thank you so much for coming.
We've had a seconded, can we please call the roll?
Mrs. Jelenella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Ms. Bastin?
Aye.
Ms. Glover?
Aye. Thank you, chief.
I'd just like to apologize to the manager for whatever I did, that I had to go last on the agenda.
Keep working. Okay, next, the next item on our agenda is council comment.
I have several things, mayor. First, I wanted to start with a very simple congratulations and public announcement that Deacon Elvio from St. Bartholomew's will be ordained this weekend. There was an invitation that went out. The, the ceremony will be occurring in Newark. On Sunday, there will be a celebratory mass, he will say is first mass at twelve noon, and a reception will be following that is obviously open to members of the community. He's really embraced the community. I believe all of the members of the council have met him. He is a wonderful person, and I wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of that. I also wanted to let the public know, we haven't had a report for a while on the Raritan Valley Coalition or any of that information, but with the, the issue of one seat being so important, I really thought it was, you know, somebody should be reporting out on it. So I wanted to let the public make sure that we were aware that there is currently an online survey being conducted, and that survey will be concluding on May twenty-sixth. There's an opportunity for people to weigh in with information and provide it to New Jersey Transit. The survey has seventeen questions, but does skip some numbers. It asks for some input as far as travel times, travel frequency, and satisfaction of current performance. It can be filled, filled out by visiting the New Jersey Transit website. It's very important for us to understand the direct impact, again, to property values as we really look to become a community where people can take one seat into the city on a regular basis, especially during peak commuting times. So I would encourage members of the public, and I believe if you need more, more information on that, I'm sure Councilman Bastin has, has that available. I wanted to spend a little bit of time also talking about some possible agenda items for the next conference meeting, for the council conference meeting, and to ask the council, you know, I thought a lot about the last meeting and kind of the whole tone of the way meetings have been occurring. It's regretful that at least one of my colleagues feels that I complain at nauseam, but one of the things that I've really been committing to is trying to find ways to have a dialogue with other members of the council. This setup here is not conducive to that. I think it's fabulous where members of the community can really come and they can participate and, and hear us, but council conference meetings shouldn't look and feel like a road show. It should, it should be something where we are behaving in a positive manner, and we should be really talking to each other so that business meetings are productive and we don't have, you know, surprise movements from the floor or unnecessary hurt feelings. We should be working together more so as a unit. So one of the things that I thought was maybe a change of venue for conference meetings is something that we should consider, and by having a change of venue, maybe the council would have an opportunity to really look at some of the facilities that we have throughout the town, whether it's Scotch Hills or possibly the firehouses. Traveling conference meetings would give the public an opportunity to really look at the decay and the neglect of some of these places. So I'm wondering, Jerry, if we could explore that as an option, if we advertise in advance and really give notice, even have somebody there to film the meeting. It couldn't broadcast live, obviously, but I don't see why we couldn't really explore this as a nice possibility for the council to get into a setting that would lend itself maybe to better behavior and also to provide some council members who haven't yet had an opportunity to look at some of these facilities with access to that.
There is nothing that prevents us from moving the council meeting to any place we want, as long as it's advertised in the normal course of the advertisement, that's entirely up to the council, so.
So I'm thinking with our new system, though, that Wi-Fi may be an issue, but we may, we should get Wi-Fi in the North Side Firehouse. We should be able to pick up the township's Wi-Fi there.
Okay, yeah, I don't, probably.
Okay. Could we look into that, maybe? Oh, see, so then, on the subject of the council conference meeting, I do appreciate the fact that we have a committee of volunteers looking at the downtown. This will be one of several committees that has been tasked to look at the downtown, and I'm hoping that some good things come out of it. I'm a little concerned by this evening's vote, really, quite frankly, because the message there is that not everybody's input is welcomed. One of the pieces that's a little bit troubling to me, and we did all vote on this, obviously, as, as a group, I would recognize and support any efforts to make improvements to the downtown, is that when we speak to residents, unless you're really watching the council meetings on a regular basis, the residents of Scotch Plains expect the people that they elect to govern to govern. So, I'm, I'm a little bit troubled by our lack of involvement in potential growth plans for the downtown. One of the pieces of frustration that the mayor and I have discussed is that we are essentially trying again to reinvent the wheel when the wheel may already be invented for us and very much publicly and readily available. So, I, I put together, along with the mayor, some thoughts that may be helpful to you, and maybe, I was hoping that we could consider even possibly introducing some ordinances as a result from some of this information. I know that Mr. Lehrer will ask, what, what exactly are you asking me to do here? So I'll follow up with him on what exactly I'm asking for Mr. Lehrer, but I'm trying to kind of put out some feelers and have a, a, a really civilized council conference meeting discussion about some things that we can do now in the downtown to make improvements that could get people excited about the possibility of another committee and about some things that we can do in the long term. Specifically, really looking at the Main Street Program. For those of you who haven't really taken the time to study what Main, the Main Street Program is, it's an incredible opportunity and it is an amazing fit for our community. Part of what Main Street does is it provides a vehicle to make improvements to downtowns that have historic buildings within their community and are looking to celebrate their history as well as make advancements or improvements to the township shopping area at the same time. I'm sorry. You can't hear me? Okay. So, the Main Street Program is not new. It's not something that I created or something that came about yesterday. It's readily available through just a regular search, through any search engines. There are incredible ideas and resources that are available to us, but it does require a cohesive commitment and kind of a shared vision. So I think that this could couple very nicely with, with the work of this committee. But in the meantime, I, I don't wanna get into a situation where we take minutes and lose hours, you know, that's the standing joke about committees. I really would like to see what options are available to us now, and there's some bullet points on here. I know this is a business meeting and this really, we could, what I'm asking essentially is that these individual items be placed onto a conference meeting agenda so that we could explore such things as really looking to waive some of the fees associated with construction in the B-two and B-three zone, look at possibilities of helping assisting business owners with matching fund grants to purchase awnings that are consistent with prior drawings that have been done for the downtown as far as prior visions. I have the whole thing. I mean, I'm looking to make the next conference meeting meaningful. So if we could find a way to do that, this way you all have some time to look at this in advance, it would be very helpful if as a council, we really picked up the ball and started to run with it, with the downtown.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's an interesting concept, similar to when we put forward the lowest tax increase in eleven years, the very next breath, we heard zero increase! We put together a downtown business district or downtown development committee, and the next thing in the next breath is a, is a whole new plan that we're putting forward. As far as the, moving the council conference meetings, I mean, I, I don't necessarily disagree with changing the venue. I would say that a closer inspection of the last televised meeting that we had would show you some very unflattering things, comments, and not necessarily the most ideal decorum that we could see from our council up here. I'm not sure if changing the venue is going to change the, the attitudes, but, you know, if, if that's something that the majority of the council believes will be helpful in this process, by all means, I'm, I would be someone who would support it. Getting back to the budget, I think it's interesting that the main point that was made was that if we had done the police merger, we would have a lot more money left to do all of these wonderful things. But I would remind the public that we evaluated one form of police merger, which was the joint meeting, and at the end of the day, the reason why we voted against that was that it required that Scotch Plains initially pay seventy-five percent of the cost and only have thirty percent of the input. Now, I can appreciate the defense of our county government and the high taxes that we pay there by the, by, by the councilwoman of the same party, but I don't necessarily think that that's to the advantage of Scotch Plains taxpayers to defend the spending at the county. It's also very telling, in my opinion, that they continue to support the, the joint meeting structure of a police merger to the benefit of Thanh Wood and less so to the benefit of Scotch Plains, even though we are elected here in Scotch Plains. I guess, though, since the vice chair of the county committee that controls the Democratic Line would benefit from that arrangement, it probably makes sense to support it. As far as the overall budget, you know, in past years, we've heard things like we can do better, but the truth of the matter is, in, in, in espousing those words, we never see anything to back it up. We never see any suggestions, we never see anything that would lend itself to cutting the budget versus gimmicks and tricks, taking money from other places to offset the budget. What, what I think we've done, and I think this data that I have demonstrates it, is that when you look at the municipal portion of our taxes, as demonstrated in the slides that Mr. Jones pointed out, even going back to two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, the Scotch Plains municipal portion was the second lowest in Union County. I'm sorry, I'm mistaken, third lowest in Union County. So, and I think that the mayor pointed out, well, because the former mayor, Marty Marks, came to this very council two years ago, that the last time we had a zero increase, it was followed by a huge spike the following year to make up for those differences. So, I'm very pleased that we've put forward a responsible budget, I'm very pleased that we've put forward an effective budget, I'm very proud of the fact that we restored the library budget this year, and I'm very proud of the fact that our paving program was done, with the exception of Westfield and Potholes, in a span of three weeks. I think that is effective government, that is effective leadership, and I don't think that it required us to steal from Peter to pay Paul as we did last year. One last point that I would make as it relates to the budget. All of us up here are, for the most part, volunteers. We, we volunteer to be up here, we run for office, but by no means does it make us municipal budget experts, right? We understand the numbers on a macro level, we understand numbers in general, but municipal finance is somewhat different, and some would argue that it takes a little while to, to get to the point where you understand this. When you have your town CFO, your township manager, and the auditor of the town saying that it doesn't make sense to lower the budget any further from the increase, we kinda have to take a step back and say, hey, these people are professionals, they know how municipal budgeting and, and finance works better than we do. Doesn't mean we don't know anything, but to contradict and vote against this budget when all three of those people weighed in, when specifically asked, do you support this? I think is irresponsible, and if it's not, if it's not as political as you can imagine, to just be contrarian, as the mayor likes to point out, I don't know what is, because frankly, I haven't, I haven't heard a single, that I can recall, a single suggestion to this budget to improve upon it or to change it or to add something to it other than a call to offset recreation fees. There was no, nothing specific. So, I am wholeheartedly in support of this budget. I think it's responsible, I think it's effective, and I think that it should be something that the residents of Scotch Plains can be proud of because we achieve our goals without having to raise taxes above a very minimal level, but yet we're not stealing money from other areas for one-year, one-time gimmicks. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, when we were doing the budget, Mr. Bastin had to get his thoughts together, his comments on the budget. Mr. Bastin, I'm glad you finally did, and you shared with this community your thoughts about the budget. Listen, I'm not gonna belabor this, I'm not gonna keep people up, keep you all here. The fact of the matter is, yes, one of my favorite expressions, one of my expressions attributed to me since the time I got elected to the council in two thousand six was we can do better, and clearly, we can do better. Only two people on this council aren't running for anything this year, sitting here right now, but, you know, you've heard a lot of commentary from the others who are up for election, and we've seen charts from folks who are running that haven't been verified, haven't been vetted. So I hope you all sitting at home got all that, because I certainly didn't. We've had smokescreen pivots, reference to the Board of Ed, why is their budget going up? We had, you know, you know, discussion about the county, smokescreen pivot. We are responsible for the municipal budget, it's that simple. Last year, the CFO agreed with the budget, which now we're hearing contrary comments, that a couple of people were rogue last year approving the, the lowest increase in ten years, and, and, and some of those folks said that it would cause a massive crisis in two thousand fourteen. Folks, as I said, I'm not gonna belabor this, I'm simply gonna tell you. People think eleven dollars isn't a lot of money? Send it to the rescue squad. Taxes are too high in New Jersey. This council is only responsible for this municipal budget. There's no reason to have a tax increase this year. This, this municipality has plenty of cash in reserve, and there are areas within that budget that could be cut, but I don't wanna get into micromanaging ten thousand here, five thousand here. We have plenty of reserves. You pay too much taxes today. Ms. Jelenella and I have made it categorically clear, and I am a good study on the budget as most of you know, have been since I got on this council, contrary to other people who couldn't tell you where the surplus is within the budget. And I will tell you that unlike what you heard a second ago, that Mayor Marks in two thousand had a zero percent budget, he proposed that budget, he was running for mayor. The next year, he got creamed because he was, it was an irresponsible budget and it didn't do the due diligence it should've. I assure you, I have studied the budget, I know this budget, we are talking about less than a hundred thousand dollars on a twenty-eight million dollar budget. Folks, I don't have the votes this year, but there's an election this year since people are bringing it up. are bringing it up, and I regret that you will have a municipal budget, or increase, albeit a small one. But small isn't nil, and nil was possible.
I'm going to make a comment to that because I take exception to the notion that any charts and any, you know.
I didn't refer to your charts.
But I, but what I did was illustrate the county government and the school district, and doing so gives the public.
Mr. Jones, I don't.
I'm going to, please, mayor.
Mr. Jones, I want to correct. Mr. Jones.
Point of order, please allow him to finish speaking.
I am not commenting on any one of your charts.
Just let him speak.
Not, excuse me. This is not a debate between the manager whom this council hires and me. Mr. Jones, just for the record, I'm not commenting on your charts. I'm commenting on a person running for office putting charts up there that haven't been shared in advance by the council.
Fair enough, but the comment, fair enough, but the comment that was made, at least twice, was that pointing out what the county government does and the school district does is somehow pointing the finger, there is some sort of a smokescreen. The public, when getting a budget presentation, has every right and it's the responsibility of my office to let them know where the money is coming from and where it's going to because you'd be surprised, actually, you wouldn't be surprised because you're in this long enough.
I think so.
That you hear from people all the time that don't, not all, people don't get it. They pay the money to us and they think that we're responsible for the entire budget and we're not. So when I'm doing that, I'm not knocking the county government, I'm not knocking the Scotch Plains.
I didn't say what, sir.
I am knocking the state as it relates to state aid.
And you and I have had that discussion, and I completely agree, and as you know, I've been to Trenton lobbying for the fact that they are shortchanging this community and the rest of the 500-plus municipalities on monies we send there that we don't get back. I'm not going to get into the funding of education, that's where the biggest tax dollar goes. I'm not going to get the fact, get into the fact that we've been shortchanged on monies that we sent that were ours, that they're using to balance their budget there. You and I agree with that 100%. We've had that discussion. Not making any reference to the fact that, yes, it's important that we show what other communities do, you know, I don't think other communities, but the percentage. I've been listening to that since Mayor Marks. I think the public gets it. 18% of your tax bill goes to the municipality, as I said earlier. That's what I'm and this council is responsible for. So my reference to bringing up those other things is simply that, let's focus on what I can control, what this council can control, reference relevant to what Councilwoman Jelenella so articulated and thoughtfully before. So now that we've all had a chance to comment, and I'm sure.
No, no, we haven't.
Well.
Thank you very much. I would like to just comment very briefly. First of all, it's not pointing fingers to make the points I did out, I did earlier. It's pointing to what reality is. People want to understand why they're going to get that $400 increase. I'm simply pointing out reality. Secondly, all the charts that I created earlier and ran during this meeting are absolutely correct. I will make them available to the public, I will send them to the newspaper. All the numbers in those charts come off the websites and municipalities and the county government of Union County. And one other point that escapes me at the moment.
There was a governor in Texas that that happened to once. Anyone else?
Yeah, very quickly. I think it's very.
I think you did comment before on this, didn't you?
Well, this is council time, isn't it? I mean, I've heard a lot of things being tossed about.
Didn't we do, didn't we do council? Okay, I did, I'm sorry, I thought you may have spoken. You and I had a bet as to what time we were going to get out of here.
Well, I'm trying not to contribute to it. I mean, you know, we should have been out of here maybe 25 minutes ago.
Well, I feel that way probably, as you know, and you and I talked about it.
Yes, sir.
Many meetings, but the vitriolic nature of these meetings prevent us from going.
Absolutely.
Then be quiet and let them speak.
There, another example. Please.
You know, I don't know why this discussion is taking place during council comment. We went through the budget before, people had the opportunity to comment, and now it seems like we're rehashing that.
I agree with you.
You know, look, I'm not trying to open up any wounds here, but, you know, it's very easy to find fault with anything that, you know, the town council does and to make a counterargument. And I think we've heard those counterarguments about this year's budget. Well, you heard all the reasons why this year's budget is a sensible, fair, physically prudent, reasonable thing to do for the residents of Scotch Plains. All the other information is factual. Those are just the facts, and unfortunately for all of us who are residents of Scotch Plains, we're all going to bear the brunt of a large tax increase this year, coming from the Board of Ed, coming from the county, and we are doing our utmost not to contribute to that, and the proof is in the pudding. In my four years, this is the lowest, the lowest tax increase we have had, period. And at the same time, we restored the library, so I'm not done.
Thank you, thank you. But in fairness, in fairness, you had an opportunity, you just mentioned, and I agreed with you.
I've been sitting here, sitting here in a barrage.
But I agreed with you that, you know, the appropriate time for this discussion was during the review of the budget. You said that at your opening. You didn't understand why it was being discussed. The only reason I responded because a councilman running for election didn't choose to speak, I reframed from it as a result, but chose the opportunity, which was an inopportune time, that's not the time for us to be discussing the budget. That intent of the conference count questions was to talk to what we might be considering in the future or to get some clarification, not to review it, the budget again.
I understand, everybody had their opportunities.
Everyone had their opportunity.
So hold on, except Mr. Marks, who hasn't finished yet.
Well, I have no problem, but I think, I just wanted to clarify that I do agree with him, that we had that opportunity to discuss, and I think you, quite frankly.
Please let him speak.
Spoke, you know, clearly and thoughtfully about your reasons for supporting the budget. That's all I'm saying.
I'm not going to add anything further, but leave it at that.
For another comment, I would like to suggest, Councilwoman brought up the Raritan Valley Rail Coalition and the survey. At a previous meeting, I did mention and ask that we could have that link put on our website so that people would have the ability to go to our website and sign the petition. You recall that in a, in a public meeting?
I believe that was a petition, I might be referring to something different, but I'm not.
Okay. I just want to, I mean, it was something that I had encouraged that we do as a way to increase the number of people that sign the petition in support of the one-seat ride.
That's good. You are our liaison to that, I believe, right?
I am, yes.
So hopefully you'll be attending those meetings and keep us surprised.
I have been, yes, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this time, we would ask anyone who has a comment to come forward. State your name and address again.
Carolyn Perkins, 861 Westfield Road, Scotch Plains. Jerry, I didn't mention it, I did mention to Chief Mahoney that on Westfield Road, there were always signs on the Scotch Plains side, I don't know about Fanwood because it's both, you know, it's one town on one side, one on the other, it says, "No parking at any time." Most of those signs are gone. I think people took them off their lines because they didn't like them and didn't want to have to mow around them. There's still one in front of my house, but there really should not be any parking on Westfield Road, okay? It's a very busy street with the school buses, the kids walking to school, et cetera. Last weekend, there was an estate sale. There were cars on the Fanwood side, on the Scotch Plains side, and trucks trying to go through. That was a real safety issue, and I would hope somebody would address that.
I'll have the chief look at the road, make sure the signage is consistent, and if there needs to be more signs, please do so.
Yeah, because the kids walk there, et cetera. Now, on last week, Wednesday, on the 14th, going on US 22 eastbound around 7:30 PM, you could not go. Between Scotch Plains and New Providence Road and that, my husband was trying to get into Union. You couldn't go. People were actually on the shoulder. I don't know how he turned around and got home, but there was nothing on our radio station, so I don't know what the problem was.
Usually when they're doing work, it's, I don't know.
No, no, it was, no.
Accident, I mean.
I don't know, but nobody could go anywhere.
If they're doing work, they usually notify us typically ahead of time with good notice. I don't recall receiving any notice if it was an accident of some sort. I'll check on how the police department receives that information.
Okay, and with that, Westfield Road and the no parking, et cetera, as I spoke to Chief Mahoney, they're speeding, they're going more than 25, and the kids are walking to school and the school buses are going. A New Yorker passed me going at least 40 over a double yellow line, and I honked at him and he couldn't care less. My last thing I'm going to mention, and thank you very much for working on the budget. I know this is not an easy job for any of you, and nobody wants their taxes raised. You do the best you can, you kind of swallow it, and you move on. Now, the township meetings. I will say this because I am very embarrassed, and I cannot understand why it's still partisan. It is. We say we're not. You're not really voting because you're voting for the best things for the town. Many times, it becomes a partisan issue, okay? And nobody should be parking, pointing fingers, and I don't care where you meet, unless you change your demeanor as professional people trying to resolve a problem, you will not get anywhere. And I will leave you with two thoughts that I've remembered ever since I was growing up. 'Tis better to be thought a fool than to open your mouth and remove all doubt. The second thing is, is if you can't say anything nice, don't say anything at all.
Thank you so much. Couldn't agree with you more. And that said, we're going to, let's see, do we have the agenda for our conference meeting? Do we have anything yet? No. So with that, I'm going to hope this works, and we're going to open up the mic, the telephone, for anyone who would like to address this council. The number in the council chamber is 908-322-2076. That number again is 908-322-2076. We'd love to hear from you. Not hearing anyone calling. I'd like a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Zero second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Everyone have a great evening. I'll look forward to seeing you at the Memorial Day Parade and the concert, which begins at 6:30 at the Fanwood train station. It's going to be a wonderful day, wonderful evening to pay a tribute to our veterans and to those currently serving. Thank you all.
Can we hear more about what we just said? I'll listen to you. We're switching out.